So I call the meeting to order and document the time at 6:35. If you would, join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Thank you, Tori. If you could do our mindfulness.
Do I?
So we all take a couple minutes to honor our kids, to do some mindfulness. Our kids are doing it, and there's been some great research showing that it reduces our stress and it raises our ability to pay attention to the present moment. So if you'll join us, just find a nice seat, set up nice and tall. And we'll take a, you can close your eyes, take a deep breath in, and straighten up, and take a deep breath out and settle in. Breathing in. And breathing out, settle in. And breathing in. And take a breath out. And you can find your own rhythm for breathing. And as your mind wanders to what's come before and what might possibly be ahead, you can anchor it to your breath. You can use the anchor words, breathing in and breathing out, as you find your own rhythm. And on your next exhale, you can bring yourself back into the room. And we come together to remember why we're governing, which is to keep our students at the heart and our community members at the heart of governance.
Very well done. Thank you.
Yeah.
I certainly appreciate that group coming in. I find myself sitting on my ball some days doing this at work and I end up heading into the mindful space, so. So, tonight we've got actually two focuses on FOKI. We have our PEP group here, and then we're actually gonna take a field trip tonight and go over to the iLab Share at Night for a few minutes to see what the, some of the final presentations are over there.
Love it.
Both pieces of that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sean for the intro.
So I'd like to introduce four of our wonderful ELL teachers, Rebecca Savage, Nancy DeVoe, Kristin Banfassen, and Nellie Malley. And they have led the charge on the Parents' Educational Partners Program this year. And they're gonna give you an overview of the program and talk about some of its successes and progress this year.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. I'm going to start out by talking about how it all came about. I attended a national TESOL conference in Philadelphia a couple of years ago and went to a workshop that had to do with getting parents involved in the children's education. It had been a long dream of mine to get parents more involved. And so I went to the workshop and found out about the curriculum, which, you know, the curriculum was developed by a group, an organization, outside of Chicago. So, the curriculum was not for sale, per se, unless you went to the, to the organization and learned about the curriculum. So I came back and spoke to Robin, and she gave us full support, which I greatly appreciate. And through Title III funds, we were able to send Kristin, Becky, and myself out to Chicago and learned about the curriculum. And it was a three-day workshop. And so, we brought the curriculum back. We worked last summer over, I don't know, three weeks maybe, putting, customizing it to our own needs. And you'll see part of what we developed. And then, at the picnic that we had at the beginning of the school year, we kind of focused on moms. Some moms that we knew would be benefiting from the program. So we kind of targeted them. They all were on board, and that's how it started initially. And I want to thank my colleagues for jumping in on this initiative with me. And it's been great.
So in September, we started with about eighteen mothers. And we started, you know, the curriculum and getting to know them and making these really impressive relationships with these mothers. And, but we couldn't, we did bring them tonight, but we did ask them if they wouldn't mind videotaping them and asking, you know, what worked well this year, what they liked, what they learned. And so we just have a few video snippets of them. It's kind of hard to hear.
It's kind of.
Because they, they talk quietly, but.
Um, well, yes, my as teachers is very friends and talk about each other. And we know now everything. And because we don't know before how to, can still homework and, and everything. And in the morning, um, brush your teeth, because of everything we know right now and everything, you know, that's, you know.
What did you agree with school that helped your children?
And I like this school, but, and my teachers.
So there's one of our moms.
English and writing and reading. But I needed that one, and I wanted to help my kids. And I'm out of people helping my store, thought I'm coming to us.
And that was a mom that we saw tremendous growth since the first day. She wasn't speaking, she's very quiet. And by the end, you know, she really opened up and made relationships with some of the others' moms. And that's what she was alluding to there.
The favorite is about my students, how to write, how to read. And before, what say I, what I love doing students for in school, in a school. And I listen what I, I learn about that, how to say, read, and how to write, and how, how to say write, and how to help my students. I learned about very much.
So we stress a lot in the class that even if they were not literate in English, that, you know, they could really help their children at home. And that's what that mother was talking about right there. That, you know, just asking about homework or checking a backpack is so critical to helping students do well in school or bringing them to the library, to help those literacy skills.
Where you come home, are you blowing or something like that? As a time is too much, get your name and ask them, your kids' name. I will learn to how to read and guess name. And we like to read and talk about, yeah.
So that was good, you're saying? You liked that?
Yeah, I'm speaking very well, but if you're talking around, that's fine. And I don't know.
So we got a lot of feedback from the mothers, and it was difficult to hear. So we kind of condensed it into some major points. The first one, sorry, first one, I don't remember off the top of my head. But of course, it's just building those relationships with those mothers. You know, I think the four of us can say, I can definitely say that I feel much closer to those parents, more comfortable contacting them. I feel closer to their children because of this experience. So overall, I think the relationships we built with these mothers was probably the most important part of this class. And I think we can build on that.
And we should say that I teamed with Becky. So I'm elementary and she's high school. And Nellie, uh, Nellie and Kristin teamed. So, we were, we would teach for two weeks in a row, and then the other team would take over. So we got a little bit of a break, but it worked out well.
And the moms that were in our class, we tried this first year as our pilot year to target moms that might have children throughout the school district. So some of our moms actually did have children in all three schools. And so that worked well, that Nancy and Kristin would know the younger kids. And Nellie and I had relationships with the older students. So it helped us connect with the moms as well because we knew their children's names already and knew kind of about their personalities. And they loved when we would talk about their students and we knew them on a personal level. And just in the past month or so, there's been a lot going on here at school with the iLab. We had our BYCC Farm Program. And it was great to see several of our moms actually come in for those events to support their children and that they felt comfortable to come into school. And there are a couple here tonight, but they're helping their students with their projects, so they couldn't. So one thing we tried to do is utilize the resources that we have in the community and kind of ask the moms, once we finished the curriculum, we had a couple weeks left. So what kind of extra things would you like to learn about? They talked about college, and then summer programs for their children. So we had two people come in from UVM's College of Medicine. Is that?
Health Services.
Health Services. So showing them other careers that would be out there for their children aside from doctors, because they, one thing is, they all, when they ask, when we ask them what you want your children to be, they automatically say doctors, without maybe realizing the hard work and drive that goes in, into those professions. But there are plenty of other careers in the medical field that they could certainly pursue. Then we also had our school nurse come in and did a whole workshop on just health issues, personal hygiene. And the moms really loved that. And then we had our, our tooth, our dental hygienist that works with the school come in and did a whole presentation about dental care. And then we had Ethan come up from the community center to talk about all the summer programs for K through 12 students. The moms of high school students were especially interested because he talked about the jobs programs that they have. And we actually, several of our students were hired for those programs. And then we had the Wunuski librarian come in and talk about how to get a library card because many of the moms said they didn't know how to check out a book or how to get a library card. So we, we had a lot of great workshops at the end of the year with community members.
I think one of the highlights was that we got 100% of our parents to come in for parent-teacher conferences. But I think that word participate is really important because not only did they come, but they were active in their conference. Becky and Nancy had the class prior to the conference, and they really worked with them to create questions and to feel confident coming in and meeting teachers and how to greet them and ask questions and really become part of that process to help their students in school and to understand more about the school and how our grading process works and graduation requirements and all of those things. So another thing that came out of the PEP class is that parents were able to meet each other and sort of build a community with each other across cultures, whereas they never knew each other before. Somali parents and Nepali parents found that they had a lot of common ground that they didn't expect they would have. And they began to use each other as a resource to help find jobs, find brides, find out information about different things that happens in the, happen in the community, different, just things they do to get used to being here in the United States. This is a picture of our little graduation diplomas that we gave them. And they were all very proud. And now, we asked the mothers at the end, looking to the teacher, if we could do anything, what would you have us do? So, one thing we thought we would do to help ourselves be better organized and to help us communicate better with the parents was that we built, oh no, where am I picture though? We built a website, which had a nice picture, but it's gone, where we can put community events. I just put a few examples in, the summer school, but we could update that throughout the year. Lesson resources where parents could have, parents and ourselves could constantly have access to all of the handouts that we use. Lesson plans, and of course, a photo gallery of all of the, that just takes us back to all of our pictures. And one thing that a lot of our mothers said was that they were concerned about childcare during the PEP class time. It was an issue that came up frequently. We decided to target just one parent in the family because we sort of foresaw that that would probably be an issue if we invited both parents. Where would the younger children go? We targeted mothers because we thought that in a class with just one gender, that they would be more willing to open up and more comfortable in that setting. And, but still, the childcare issue came up. So in the future, we're trying to brainstorm a way to solve that problem in order to improve the quality of the content. Of course, every teacher would say, we always need more time. There's not enough time in the world. And our goals for the future would be to increase participation of our Arabic-speaking community members because we didn't have as much participation from that group of people as we would have liked. We wanted to avoid scheduling conflicts and sort of coordinate with other things that were going on in the school. There were a couple times where parents had to make a choice between attending a PEP class or something else for their child. And that's a really hard choice to make, so we didn't, we wanna try and avoid that. And we want to increase the participation from parents who are harder to reach. The parents that we started with are the parents that were ready to go and their students do generally very well. But we'd like to try and target some of the parents whose students may face some struggles and who are more intimidated by school and the parents that we don't see in here. And I guess we're done with that. And when we asked our mothers if we could do anything, what would they see as the future of PEP? And they told us that their one dream, the thing that most of them have always wanted is to be able to read. Because they shared with us that most of them had never had the opportunity to attend school themselves. They feel very unempowered, if that's a word. They feel like very frustrated. And we were thinking that if we could, it would be amazing. And we do have the skill to try and help them realize that dream in the future. But then, on the other hand, we would also like to include fathers because we want to be equal. So, those are the two future possibilities that we have in mind.
Any questions?
I'll start with a comment. I've heard a number of times through DEE that, you know, the, the city has some challenges with the children being the ones that can speak English and the parents not necessarily, not necessarily being able to speak. So in her terms, the, the family structure is upside down where the children can, so you guys are hitting exactly the space I think we need. And it was interesting that you made a comment about helping for parent-teacher conferences, things in school, but the residual effect of this and being able to bounce it out into the community and calling for a taxi. Just the, the simple things in life are, the, the spread is phenomenal.
We had a mom who became a citizen during the class. And so, she, we helped her go and register to vote. And so she could vote for the school budget. And she was really excited about, like, it was her first time voting in, in the country. And she really wants to support the school, so.
And part of that empowerment sometimes was just in, within the home. A lot of the discussions around technology, we really had to tell the parents that even though we are giving your students a laptop, you are still in control of that. And they really didn't know that. They were like, what? I can take it away? I can tell them they have to go to bed, but they need it? And we said, no, it's in your home. You know, when it's time to go to bed or when it's time to read a book, like, you have the power to say no. And I think they really appreciated that. I mean, we assume that, but they really, they didn't know that. Another mother said that she felt as though, before, she had no idea what happened at school. And when she, she didn't even know what questions to ask her children. But now she says, when I ask if they have homework, I know they have homework, and I don't believe them when they say no. I'll find it now.
So is the, is the goal, what, that you guys started with to, to, I guess I should just say, what was the goal? I mean, was it, was it ultimately to have an impact on the students or on the parents? I mean, what's the, what's the kind of theory of change that you guys were working with?
Yeah, I think it's all connected. So we were hoping that by involving the parents more, they would get more involved in the school community and therefore, supporting their children more in their educational career. And hopefully, you know, supporting the children to pursue college or a career afterwards. Giving them that knowledge.
And just helping them navigate the system. So we really didn't focus on literacy skills, but really just how to understand our American school system and how to contact people and who to contact. And that upside-down power structure in the family is something that we are very aware of. And we've heard from a lot of parents that they're frustrated and intimidated by that. And we felt that this was a way to sort of address that holistically.
And also how to help, how the parents can help the children with homework or study skills, even if they're pre-literate. We did a class on flashcards, addition and multiplication flashcards. And we had one third grader whose mother went home and, and just practiced with her son. And he was very successful. He knows his times tables now, so, you know, at the end of third grade, that's great.
Great. We certainly appreciate the hard work. We know this is, you know, that extra little bit, that certainly helps the entire community, so. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks for sharing.
So, our next adventure again will be a field trip. We haven't done too much of that. They're set up in a cafeteria, so we'll take 15 minutes. We'll be back here and start right back in at 7:15 for the balance of our agenda. I'm gonna start then with, if there are any agenda updates or changes to the agenda? Anything that you guys saw? Great. So with that then, moving to Section 3 on the consent agenda, I would accept a motion to accept the consent agenda. Are there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Section 4, under executive limitations. Have, I'll turn it over to Sean.
So I wrote about this in, in my report. However, we didn't have all the, the details when the packet came out to you. So what you have, that I passed out to you at the very beginning of the meeting is, you have the nomination for the new position of Director of ELL, of ELL and Curriculum. It is our current ELL teacher, Kirsten Colgar. And it has there the details of usual salary, education history, deployment history, and certification. And then behind that, you have the offer of employment that would be offered to her pending your approval of her nomination.
And do you want to take three or four minutes just to discuss the conversation we had this morning about the contract and the offer of employment? Just so that we have a baseline as we move forward.
So statutorily, in school districts, the superintendent and the principals are required to have contracts. All other administrative positions do not, are not required to have contracts. It is, a fair number of school districts across the state are transitioning to this type of an agreement versus a contract. And so we're moving in that direction as well.
What?
It, it gives a lot less liability to the organization. It also, it also provides the mutual ability to move out of the agreement if need be.
So the Director of ELL is not classified under a principal-like position?
No.
It's not interpreted that way?
No.
Okay. And is this a one-year contract? I'm not just, I'm probably, you just gave it to me.
There, in a, in a, in an offer of employment, you, as soon as you put dates into it, you turn it into a contract.
Contract.
So, back up for a minute, because you just confused me. This is not something that needs a license?
It, it does.
Because you're offering her a provisional or emergency administrative license?
She is eligible for a provisional license based on her teaching experience and her current licensure and her master's degree.
And the other question I have is, did we actually put out for this?
We did. There was, in the report, I put a description of the process that we went through.
So I guess, I'm still a little confused, and I apologize. So this person is gonna fall under a teacher's contract?
No.
No, administrative.
So how are they classified then? They're an adminis, a non-contractual administrator?
Yes, non-union administrator.
Non-union, non-contractual administrator? And there'll be a job description written for that?
And we are, we have a few employees that are under very similar agreements right now, but they're not administrators. A handful of those. This has been checked through Visbit and through legal counsel and been reviewed. And there's a smile in the background that could confirm that with you if you need more details.
No, that's good enough for me.
And I wanted to make sure we had that discussion as we move forward and expand the same.
Again, you're asking all the right questions, guys. I really appreciate that. It's a means, so it's yours. I would love it if this person had more of a curriculum background. Would be my only concern. But again.
Yep.
Superintendent, you own it technically, so I'm good with it.
Right.
Is the idea to get an administrative license in the sort of medium term or something?
Um, there is a, a two-year plan to, to do that. There's about 15 credits that need to be earned. The class, the coursework will start this summer. And the, and the state will grant a provisional license with a plan in place for up to two years to earn the licensure.
Any other comment?
This is an action item?
This is an action item.
I move that we approve the Director of Curriculum ELL position.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I just want to add gratitude to the board for supporting this position, you know, in the, in the budget cycle. And I think it's a, it's a, an important shift that we need to make so that we can add the capacity that's needed for leadership, particularly in the area of ELL. And it will also allow us to pursue, allow for more leadership in the early learning area, which is another focus area for us. So thank you very much.
I think following over the last couple of years and watching Robin as the, both sections that she was handling had expanded. That was incredible work.
That was my decision right there.
Okay. So Section 5 here then is a discussion about the Superintendent Evaluation Summary. That was in the 5A as a file updated. I grabbed this and did a little bit of editing, editing from. I grabbed this and did a little bit of editing, editing from, um, Val Gardner and she was able to give me this, the basic structure of this and it was, uh, I, I'd like to just touch on page two first. Essentially, this is just each of the, uh, executive limitations down, uh, two-one through two-eight and the ones that we've touched this year, the results, uh, of, of us approving them. Uh, it shows the ones that are still outstanding a- as they, as they would be. We haven't touched them. We do have them, we'll see in a second in the calendar for, for next year, um, to, to do each two-three, two-four, two-six and two-eight. Um, I put them in such an order that I think we're gonna work out, we'll touch the calendar in a minute. But this essentially becomes the evaluation piece that we do, uh, for Sean is when we accept the executive limitations, um, we're accepting the, the interpretation, the data presented. Uh, we actually went out and, and looked through the details of one of them. That happened to be a no compliance based on, uh, salary structure. But, so, so I think this is a, a real good start, uh, to the executive limitation summaries. At the top, I wanted, uh, just to go briefly and touch, um, from an ends perspective. We don't really have a lot to work with yet. We've got a basic ends definition. It contains, in my mind, it contains really four, four sections at this point. One is college-ready, career-ready, and then local and global arguably, those may be the same, they may be different, but global and local citizenship. What does that look like? We've been through a discussion in here on college readiness. What does that look like? Uh, the summer, I think July, we had set aside in our meeting to do career-ready. What does that look like? So that when we get done, Sean will have some kind of an idea or a picture in his head to give to the administrative team to cascade down into the staff. It'll also give us a picture when they come back with, this is what we interpret college-ready and career-ready to be. We'll then be hopefully equipped to say, is this what we want? So in this section here, um, for monitoring superintendent performance on ends, um, I've just defined them, as we go through next year, hopefully we can do, get from Sean and team, uh, their definition of what is college-ready, what is career-ready. We may not necessarily have metrics next year. There may be starting to form those and how do you get them? So we can get to that point. We certainly won't have data that's streaming in. But, so I kinda put page one together here for being able to, you know, we date received. So is it a reasonable interpretation? That'll be incumbent upon us to say whether it's reasonable or not. And if it isn't reasonable, what differs from what's in there to what we would have expected? So there's gonna be a lot of give and take on the ends piece, I think, as we go through time. But it's also gonna help us focus where we, where we wanna be. So I'd like to, to request that we use this format as we move through time to try to give ourselves a matrix and how to know where we are. So I'll leave that with any thoughts you may have.
I like the matrix idea. Um, one thought that I do have is, is the phrase lead healthy, productive and successful lives. Like I think that that's a, that's also a piece.
Yep.
And again, since we are, we build it before we build something to measure it by, or interpret it by. But something to also be on that metric sheet.
So I will, uh, and, and other, I, I, I completely missed that.
I guess, I guess where the whole end statement begins is that students will graduate and I think that is solid data. And I think that is something we can monitor annually.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward, isn't it?
It's very straightforward.
It's very straightforward. The others are, are more up to sort of our discovery of the interpretation of what does that mean for our students and, and how we measure it. Yeah.
I was gonna say the timetable of graduation, though, is it the normal four-year? Are we gonna be on that as a graduation?
I, I have always said, I really, a- and there have been people that have disagreed with me in the community and people that have disagreed with me on the board. But if our students walk out of here with something showing that they've achieved the highest level they can, because special education students won't receive a diploma, but a lot of times they will get a certificate of completion, which means they've achieved something. They've achieved to their level that they've been able to achieve to. Timeline-wise, if you're thinking that a child is going to come here and, and be placed in high school in the ninth grade and they don't know what a pencil is and they're gonna graduate in four years, we've all come to the conclusion, that's crazy. But if they need that extra time, if they're getting, and I think we heard very clearly from our college people, correct me if I'm wrong, at last month's meeting, that they would rather our students take the extra time and be ready to enter their institution.
Absolutely.
So I don't think it's necessarily a fo-, four-year cohort, Jen. That's not my thought.
No, but that's what the expectations are, like, beyond us.
From the, from the state, yeah.
From the state level, four-year is the expectation.
And that's one of the data points they collect, right?
That's a good metric from the twenties to the eighties maybe, in our current situation. I don't think that's a reasonable expectation.
I agree.
Right. Right, well, we collected, I'm sure, beyond that, right? There must be.
Four, five and six, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Now, if they're, now if they don't graduate in four, five, six years and they're not still here or they're not still progressing somewhere, then I guess that's a question that needs to be addressed as well.
Right. Cause along with a four-year graduation rate, I think a retention rate for those that don't is a big number and it doesn't, that's not measured anywhere. And I think last time I looked, ours was in the eighty-five percent range.
Is that right?
Yeah, where, where if kids didn't graduate in four, eighty-five percent of them were actually coming back for five.
That's fantastic.
So, I mean, to me, that's a huge number that, that is making a statement that it's working. They, they wanna come back through. Now, do they make it? I haven't really seen that next step.
Well, so then what I would invite Sean to do then is come up with a, a metric that seems reasonable for us, uh, that includes all that, including the retention rate, which I think is a, is a really telling number.
Right.
Yep, and we'll, we'll certainly have that whole, that whole piece, so.
The only thing I'd add, Mike, is we talked about, um, whether or not doing a monitor report on two-point-O executive limitations, um, which is the, the broader policy above all the point-one-two and so forth. And so I did a little research on that. Um, and the two, uh, school districts that I kinda use as models are Essex Town, Mark Andrews and Brent K and, uh, Orange Southwest, who have been, uh, working in policy governance for longer than we have and are kind of models across the state. Essex, uh, they do not do a monitor report for two-point-O. Orange does do one.
So let me back up just a second for, because not everybody has their, their book with them. To me, when I look through it, two-O is a broad definition of the executive limitations. And then it goes into the sub-two-one through eight that are very specific about what they are. So two-O is a little bit on a generic side. And so now we've got an, uh, one district that doesn't report on it and another one that does. To me, two-O is just a culmination of one through eight. When you put them all together, that's what you get to the broader category, so.
But I think it does touch on things that aren't specifically spoken to in the other ones.
Like what?
Well, there, there may be certain policies under two-one through, you know, two-eight that may not speak to certain things which may be imprudent or immoral or illegal, which would be covered under two-point-O. I guess that's what I would feel. I, I don't think the policy, some of the policies drilled down that deeply. And I guess are executive limitations and ends exclusively all generated by the superintendent? Or are there gonna be, well, we had one that Mike touched on, and again, I wasn't here for the main meeting, so I apologize when you guys really got into this subject. But are there gonna be further direct board inspections or outside entity investigations as far as those other things as well?
Right. None of the, from, from that perspective, I think only the, only the fourth one that we did this year of the compensation and benefits really fit a category that you could actually go and inspect. Next year, I think three out of the four are in that mode. But I think, I think if you look down through the three, the four that we have to do, I believe that three out of the four really directly linked to having a direct inspection.
Financial conditions and plan, planning and budgeting.
And some of that we, we may already have. We may not have to go out and do it, but we may already have had that direct inspection, so.
So one way for the board to think about that would be, I could, I could get you Orange Southwest and Brent's, uh, uh, K's monitor report of two-point-O and you could take a look at it and see. Um, and you, you also have the other monitoring reports that I've done this year and you could kinda, uh, you know, consider that, whether or not you'd like me to do the two-point-O and make a decision.
So just to, just to get it on the table, the, the two-point-O is the superintendent shall not cause or allow any practice, activity, decision or organizational circumstance that is unlawful, unsafe, imprudent or in violation of commonly accepted educational and professional ethics and practices.
So, I could, to Jay's point, I'm wondering like if, if there were some sort of violation, that would it come up in a different part of the report? Uh, or would we just not see it?
I, I ended up on the side of not knowing, knowing when you do see it, but trying to figure out how it manifests itself when you can't find it specifically. And I don't even know that I stated that.
Where I would go with this, there, I'll give you an example. There is state data out there that falls under, and, and this is a total board and superintendent interpretation issue. How superintendent's gonna interpret it and then how the board is, is gonna judge that. But there are certain things out there that may perhaps fall under, um, certain things that may violate certain man, state mandates or laws that many school districts are in violation of. And the question of that is, is if that's happening here, and, and guys, it happens everywhere. It's not the end of the world. But how, my curiosity is more of a, how does that all work? And is that information we should be aware of and be addressing or no? It, it's, it's more of a process than it is a specific.
Right. So I think what we can do is just get a summary report. Essex does do it, you said?
They do.
Orange does, okay. So if we could maybe get a summary of one that they've done and just take a look at it to see
I'd be curious.
If it's so high a level that it really doesn't fit or if it really hits to what we need it to hit.
Well, I imagine that in, like, in your, in your average year, it would be kinda general and unnecessary, right? It's only in the years where something comes up where you, you would wanna have it, I would imagine. And what I'm curious about is if in those years where you would wanna have it, if it shows up somewhere else in the report, because it's a big deal. But I'd love to see the report from Orange.
Okay, good. All right. That was a, uh, discussion point. On to then, uh, should we wait for Rainbow to do the student report and do things together?
We should probably go ahead. We don't really know when she's gonna join us. Yeah, she's sharing a project in there, so.
Perfect. So under governance processes, then, uh, we'll turn over to the student report. So I'd like to start with Dakota. This will be your last, uh, hurrah with us. So we greatly appreciate your, uh, help over the past year here. Um, blazing a trail for, you know, those that follow and what do we do and be certainly, um, if you can share it with Sean, if you haven't already, things that you think could be done differently or expanded. We certainly would appreciate that input. So with that, I'll turn it over.
All right, so I'm gonna go back in time a little bit to May twenty-third with the senior prom. It was, reported a very successful night. Um, everyone had a lot of fun time dancing and eating and just hanging around, uh.
Where was it?
Uh, at, uh-oh.
Boyd, Boyd and Farm, Jeffersonville.
Oh, fantastic.
Um, there was a lot of, there was a variety of cultures represented at the prom, which is always great to see. Uh, there was a, there was a campfire held with smores, which I think sounds pretty fun. Um, there were no issues that occurred during the entire night. Everyone was safe. And, uh, all leftover food was donated off, so it was a pretty successful night. Um, the sports, spring sports season has just ended. It's been successful and very nice. There was an athletic banquet held to, uh, to, uh, to honor the students for all their work and sportsmanship. And a lot of, a lot of awards were handed out. Last Thursday was a wellness celebration with the entire school, in elementary to high school. Uh, there was, uh, everyone gathered inside the gym and we had a couple of very brave students speak up and discuss how they stayed well physically and mentally. And then after that, we had ice cream and we played outside.
This was the whole, this was K-12?
Yeah, everyone.
That's awesome.
Um, so last Friday, the entire middle school had a trip to J-Peak. They had fun with the inside water slides and the blind things they have up there. Um, last Friday, the VYCC held a community dinner in the cafeteria for all the parents who wanted to come and they prepared a whole bunch of different kind of foods. Um, the obvious one, there's iLab tonight. And then on Saturday, we will graduate at one in the gym, so that should be fun. And yeah.
What about the, uh, first grade career day?
All the cultures were there during our town meeting. It was pretty cool seeing, some of them were very creative.
Oh, that's awesome.
I remember seeing a, uh, military. Yeah, it was quite a feeling, so.
Great.
Yeah, there was some kid with a laser zapper or something too. I don't know who that kid was.
Always one.
And there's a kindergarten graduation Friday morning.
Tomorrow night is the eighth grade graduation.
Oh, my gosh.
Friday, there's a senior banquet for, with all the teachers throughout the entire school district to kind of say our last goodbyes. And then we have rehearsal. And then, like I said, tomorrow night stays your graduation where all the eighth graders move up to high school, so should be fun.
That's great. Fun week.
Yeah. Where are you headed next year, Dakota?
Um, I'm going to Basic this summer and then I had to defer my Norwich acceptance to next fall, so. Norwich next year.
Exciting, yeah.
Basics, wow.
Should be fun.
Get your push-ups ready.
Congratulations.
Anything else? Very good. All right, uh, so now we're, um, we've got a, two readings, one access to electronics and one child nutrition and wellness. Take, take those.
Uh, in your packet, you had the, the current, uh, we'll start with access to electronic network, networks and you had, uh, the current policy. And then you also had a copy of the, uh, VSBA model policy. And, um, the, I guess to lay out your conversation, um, I would say that our current policy is simpler than the model. And encompasses, uh, the necessary items. A lot of it is in the administrative procedure and acceptable use. Part of the policy versus, um, uh, the definition side of the, uh, the model. So I think that's kind of a decision point for the board about where you would like that information included. And then I think there's some minor updating of language that could be, uh, done across it. Where we talk about technology versus electronics and things like that.
Cause that's the one piece in the electronics is keeping it up to date. And after, after finding a telegram in, uh, the contract for services, it's, uh, we'll certainly wanna keep them up to, up to date.
On a floppy disk.
So I think the, the recommendation on the, uh, access to electronics then is to stay with their current
Current one.
Rather than moving to the, to the state that's encompassing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd be, uh, I didn't know if there was gonna be any conversation if people had a preference for either. If there isn't a preference, I, I recommend, I would recommend that I could take back our current policy and kind of update it with some of the, the antiquated language, um, and, uh, double-check any references, which I don't think there really are many, but there's a ton of them in the, in the model. See if any of those are required and then bring those together and, um, bring a polished copy to you at the next meeting.
That's good.
Any other, uh, thoughts on the access to electronic networks as we've talked about?
The second one, nutrition and, and wellness, um, are very similar, if you notice. So I, there, there isn't necessarily anything in the, um, uh, mod- So I, there, there isn't necessarily anything in the, um, uh, model that we're missing. There are certainly some areas in our current policy, um, that I think we should consider updating. When we talk about the Vermont frameworks of standards and learning opportunities. Uh, those aren't necessarily being used widely across the state very much anymore with the, with the, uh, transition to, uh, common core standards. But we do need, uh, there isn't necessarily health education standards in the common core. So we, we would wanna think about updating some of that language, um, in the goals areas. Other than that, they are pretty much the same, the, the, on page two, under policy implementation, I would ask, uh, to do the same thing that we've done. With a couple of other policies, which is, it says shall report at least annually, um, that we change that to, um. Read, uh, per the policy cycle review. Unless the board wants an annual report on, on, uh, this policy, we would do it every, uh, two to three years.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
I can tell you this, there are major changes coming from the feds regarding Title Seven with child nutrition. And there's been a lot of back and forth with our National School Boards Association because some of the things that are coming are very demanding on school districts. I don't know if that's gonna drive policy change. But I I would say as required, um, you know, cause if we get a major policy change from the feds, it may drive changes for us.
Which would then, I think, be, uh, drive from a model policy that would be developed at the V S B A level and then.
Okay.
Yeah, which I probably would not be ready for us in this cycle.
Right.
Yeah, I had, uh, I had two thoughts, one of them was, uh, right up in the front of the policy statement. It was, uh, Vermont Nutrition and Fitness Policy Guidelines of November two thousand five shall be used as the basis. So I think that's what you were referencing.
Right.
Uh, the other one was though, if we're gonna hire, uh, wellness coordinator. Would this be one of their first or second activities to?
It is and it's, um.
Format formulate, should we defer this, I guess is my, my question.
We could defer it or we could, um, write the poli- you know, write the policy, the board could adopt it. And that would give direction for the person in that position. And then when it comes up again, uh, we will have had a couple of years' experience to, uh, take notes on and revise it at the next, next turn. Cause it was in the posting, there is, one of the bullets in the posting is that, um, uh, they will, um, carry out the, the policy.
Yeah, I guess, and just trying to think through that and, um. I'm not convinced that I have any real good clues about goals for nutritional education. I take all of that from my wife, cause she's the one that drives that piece, but I'm not sure I could sit down, you know, goals for physical activity. And it's nice to have a motherhood statement and know that you got to have somebody that actually is going to. You know, come forward and say, these are, this is where we're driving, as long as it aligns pretty well with, you know, the, the standards.
Why the federal government is getting involved? Because it's just taken such a backseat to the educational system. Cause that used to be in school every single day, kids need physical activity to be healthy.
Well, as long as we're following guidelines, I guess I kinda agree with you, Mike, that I would love the new person that comes in. To have, you know, once they meet that state and federal requirement. That something that they would wanna tailor and perhaps, you know, obviously through you, come back to us and say, hey, these are some of the things that we'd like to see.
And that may be the procedure piece, I guess.
Yeah.
We keep the policy at a high enough level, that would be the procedural piece that, that that would be, how are we actually gonna do it?
Right.
Right?
Cause the, the, the policy pieces, the goals are, are pretty broad.
Right.
Very broad.
In the current policy, yeah.
Which is good.
Well, then we could approve the policy and I guess you, you know, the intent of the board.
Right.
When the new person comes on board, you're, the superintendent is free on these policies to update procedures, right? So you could get together with that person and say, hey, this is what the school board is thinking and. I mean, that's what we're all thinking, but.
My preference would be to give the person at least a year to kind of do some needs assessment and so forth. Before coming back with me to the board to make recommendations about policy changes. Uh, so I think with, with that, you either table it and we, we refit it into the policy review cycle for a year down the road.
That's what I would do.
Or, um, you know, we polish it up and you adopt it at the next meeting and then you have the right to, to ask it to be reviewed at any point.
So this has been, this has been eight years.
Yeah, but nothing's really changed in eight years, so I would table it, get somebody in here to do it and then go from there. Because it's a huge thing right now.
It fits back into our ends with wellness and overall, right, so.
So this policy is in existence right now.
This one is, it's required.
Right, and 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 there's no changes that we're really making on it, we're just reviewing it.
Right.
Well, there, there are some references in here that do need to be changed, like back to standards that really aren't.
The language, right, the language of that, but nothing major's being changed on it.
So I would still table, I would table it.
So this still gives them the guidelines.
Yep.
They still come into the position with the guidelines of expectations and then within those broad guidelines, they're sort of framing, as they do their needs assessment. The more particular details, yeah.
So I think this sounds like we're all, all on the same page to table it at this point. And then let it, as it is, it is enough to keep us with some framework and we'll let them tailor it.
Because if we wait, then it could be two to three years before we see it again and the way everything changes so quickly. We may not wanna wait two to three years.
Yeah.
So we would see this again next year.
Right.
Uh, yeah, after somebody's been into it, a full, a full year of.
Late next year, late May, June.
Yeah.
So I'll refit it into the review cycle to.
Okay, alright. Alright, so if I remember right, last time, we don't have to. Approve the first readings at all, it's the approval is in the consent agenda on the second go around, if I remember. That, Jay, I hit that?
It, it doesn't matter on, on the policy, on the, on the one you're not gonna do anything with, no action would be taken.
Right.
Because you can't table it or postpone it because either one of those motions can only go out, uh, quarterly or, or in our case ninety days. So it just basically.
No action.
No action would be taken on that one and Sean's just gonna take it, refit it back in and then the other one, he's just gonna make. You know, it was a discussion tonight, he's gonna make his changes and it only takes one reading of policy to approve it, so.
Okay, perfect, alright, good, good discussion, thank you. Um, next, uh, six C is, uh, prove a recommendation for an auditor, you do have another page here that was handed out. So I will again turn it, Sean, over to you. Uh, I think the background of this is we had been using our current auditor for quite a number of years, which is not necessarily good practice. Above three years or so, so we're in the process of changing that up and.
Yeah.
Turn it over.
So this, uh, this was handed to you tonight because of the, this was the second time that we went out to bid because we didn't get enough. Uh, we felt competitive bids on the first R F P, um, so we recommended to the board to go back out and we did that. And, um, these three bids came, as you can see, with a three-year, um, um, cost. And the recommendation is, uh, uh, that we go with the first firm there, who was not the highest nor the lowest. Um, but based on the proposal, based on recommendations, um, that Rebecca and I checked out, we'd recommend that you award it to Father Gil Segal in Valley.
So these, they, they responded to the R F P, they made a decent proposal, reasonably detailed.
Yep, yep, all three of them did, make detailed proposals, yep.
Good, specific to Winus Kimmy, it's not.
Yeah, so yeah, it's very specific, yep.
Okay, and why did you like those guys?
Um, they have a, a great deal of experience with schools. Uh, personally, I've worked with them in the past and found them to be, uh, outstanding. Um, and I have colleagues across the state and so does Rebecca on the, on the business manager side that highly recommend them.
Great, great, so just to be clear, given all this being going down lately, uh, in, in the county, uh, around. Issues of fiscal compliance and so forth, uh, this is the kind of audit where, I mean, you know, to protect you, to protect the school, to protect us as a board. We, we would see anomalies of the kind that weren't seen, you know, across the river over there?
Yes.
Okay, you're pretty confident in that?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, as Mike mentioned at the top, it is, it's time to, you know, change.
Yeah, no, I think that's correct.
You know, it's good business practice to do that, you get a new set of eyes, new group of people on it. And, um, uh, we get a whole new fresh look and report.
Okay.
I think a little more to yours, I think we do, uh, budgeting process of budgeting to, budgets to actuals rather than budget to budget. Cycles and I think, to me, that sounds, though I'm not an accountant, like, it's a much more prudent way to.
Right.
Do your, uh, do your calculations or.
Your books.
Analysis, yeah.
Right.
So I think the, we have a thought, any other conversation on?
I move, we approve the recommendation for the auditor.
Second.
So I would ask the all in favor of approving Father Gil Segal in Valley, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Good that we're keeping our eye on it, couldn't bring it up.
You don't want that to come sneak up on you.
Nope, nope.
So many of your sneak.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, item D here then, and our next to, uh, our, our last item, other than, uh, next agenda comments. Um, a review of the draft of the annual agenda plan, uh, for fourteen fifteen. So that's the colorful sheet that we have here in front of you, it'd take just a couple of minutes to come down through here. Um, fortunately, I had found, uh, through Sean that, um. Sandy had actually added to make the agenda, uh, prep. Sandy had added focus on learning, consent agenda approvals and a couple of other items to a framework that I had found. And so, you know, focus on learning at the top, there's some things that are filled in there, those will be, uh, updated. As we go.
Cause this was last year.
This is, this is the current stuff, but at least it, it's, you know, gives you a framework. What I did change in here though, and I wanted to get a little bit of feedback on, um, the. Under the consent agenda approvals of Visbit proxy, that is just, uh, pretty much a standard. You can vote for, you can have people go to the annual meeting and actually work with the Visbit folks, Jay. Or you can just by proxy, uh, uh, let them prove and do what they need to do, so that, that stays in. Uh, setting the high school choice capacity and limits, um, approving the announced tuition, that seemed to time out pretty well. Uh, contract stuff in, in March and April worked out pretty well. Uh, the school year calendar is pretty standard. Um, in here are, I think, the current policies, or did you actually go into next year's under the policy, the required policies? Is that the view for next year?
That is the policy review cycle, I believe.
Okay, uh, but then you can see, uh, in the orange section here, the ends monitoring, I kind of penciled in a college readiness. In talking to Sean, we would have at least a first comeback of what might this look like and what is this starting to put a framework on that. Uh, career readiness, uh, kinda worked around November and December from a budget standpoint to make sure we had time to do the budget rather than jam everything in. We may add, uh, the wellness and something as we get later in the year. Um, so in that ends monitoring piece, I'd like to, at the end of next year, get at least one pass of each. If we can, at least the first pass to get a, start to get a framework for them. Um, and then, uh, executive limitations, you can see under the, the, the bottom line, there's the two, three, the two, eight. Two, six, and then two, four, where, uh, we'll go through the executive limitations that Sean's gonna pull through for us. The question I had here is, under the green section, um, I think I'm gonna leave that piece blank. Uh, along the top line, that is again, reviewing our current policy governance policies. Um, we haven't had, I think, enough time, we've had one year, not even quite one full year through the cycle yet. So I'm not convinced we're ready to go back through and start to redo these at this point. If they come up and we need to do something, we'll drag one in and review it, see if it's what we need, adjust it if necessary. But I think what I'll do is I'll take that entire piece out, I just wanted approval to, to not have to go through that yet. Um. Meeting with the auditor and the bottom line, I think we need to, to keep that piece in there. Superintendent evaluation and expectations is gonna be, I think, moved out to June. So it's beyond the point where we've already reviewed the other four. And that way it'll, it'll align a whole lot better than, than where it is there, so I, I would recommend that we move that out to, to June. In the blue sections down below, I don't think there, I, I thought the, and I wanted some feedback from this. I thought having, uh, Clem and George in this year, in this year before the legislative session start, started, worked pretty well. At least they understood where we were.
Yeah.
So if we continue to do that, we may have one new face in here, I think, uh. Uh, so we'll continue to do that, I thought the legislative updates, I think we had a real reason, I think, to follow those this year, so.
I think we're gonna have a real reason to follow them next year.
I suspect it won't be any different, yeah. Um, and then reviewing of the board policies at the bottom. So the only question I had in here then is the staff appreciation, when was that dinner or that luncheon, is that?
Um, well, there's two.
Right, there's.
There was the, the one in May, May twenty second this year and that was a breakfast and the P T O.
Done by the P T O.
Organized that one.
And then we're doing the luncheon, it's Friday.
And then the board is supporting the, the luncheon on Friday.
That's this Friday?
Yes.
Okay, and, um. Did, can we get invite, did anybody know, uh, the Friday date for the luncheon? Okay, can anybody be here? I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the time.
What time is it?
I can try.
It's eleven thirty to twelve thirty.
Do you mind if we come and express our appreciation at least?
No, if I don't, yes.
Okay, perfect, it would be good to have, good to have that presence, um, and I would like to request, if I could, I'll do it here. Um, to be able to read that letter from the individual, to give the staff an indication that at the end of the day, they are making a difference. So I got a powerful email when we did the college readiness, I asked a young gentleman to write up, uh. I asked him to come and have partaken in a discussion and, and if you come, you'll, you'll see that he's got some pretty special, uh, situations. But the staff here made a big difference in his life, so.
That's great.
I wanna get that out to them, so, we'll do that and then, uh, other than that, so we'll make a couple of, uh, adjustments here to the calendar. Any other thoughts?
My only thought was the city school joint board meetings, would that go into community engagement?
Uh.
If we engage.
I think actually it would.
Yeah, at some point getting.
Yeah, we do have some information, we're trying to put one together right now, we're not getting.
Supposed to meet with them soon?
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't met with them in forever.
Yeah, the M O U itself is not quite ready, um, it's been focused on parking lots and, uh. Uh, res- uh, school resource officer and the thought now is to potentially expand it into what else can we do as a.
Great.
Team to try to focus some of the direction we're heading, so Deke, I think, is working with you on that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think the earliest that would be ready would probably be for the July or August. If we, if you have a meeting in July, it would be then.
Yeah, and I think we talked about our July meeting being a career-ready discussion, so we've gotta try to figure out what we, uh. Who we want in here for that and how we get them and how we invite them, I thought it was a powerful discussion we had, um, with the college readiness. If we can have one like that with the career readiness, I think that would be huge. Um, in thirty seconds or less, thoughts on people you'd like to have around the table?
My web grocer?
Yes. Maybe a couple of the.
The restaurants?
Yep, grocery store managers or someone in that area.
Yep.
Maybe a little of the side stores.
Maybe some small businesses even in Burlington.
Myers Pack Services, um, banking, banks.
Or the, uh, or even a larger business.
Well.
Maybe we don't have to restrict it to Winuski, right?
No, no.
I would do, I would do a mixture of large and small businesses.
Dealer dot com.
Fletcher.
Fletcher Allen is perfect, cause they have many different avenues for career.
Yes, there was a huge range.
Right.
Huge range, yeah.
Transportation, the C. Cause transportation, I mean, there's tons you could just sit here and think about and get them in, yeah, yeah, the interval. Maybe from the city government.
Ooh, government, education? Ooh, government. Education, as a career, maybe.
So.
Alright.
There's a few.
Yeah, yeah, got some, got some work for contacts, so, if anybody's got any contacts there, let me.
Emergency.
Like Chevrolet, um.
Police and fire?
Yep.
Hard promise, big.
Pack the house here?
Well, yeah, but a lot of those you can do before, like police and fire, you can do before you're out of school if you're within age.
I know, which is wonderful, yeah.
Thank you?
No.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah.
I think that's, uh, if we can get another ten folks, I think that'd be probably a manageable group. I think too much beyond that, nobody gets a chance to talk or, so, okay, so we'll work on, uh. Try to figure out what that looks like, and that will be pretty much our July meeting, there will be the, the very, the requirements, if there's some. But I wanna keep that one to that discussion.
Okay.
Sounds good.
August, I believe, we'll be looking at a retreat to do a deeper discussion on career readiness and college readiness. And what are our, our goals for looking forward, so that we can actually then look back, I think, for the, one of the first times and say. Did we set goals? Did we get there? And what do we need to do different? So, I'm certainly looking forward to that discussion. Alright.
Can we set a date for the August retreat sooner rather than later, please? And I don't care when it is.
I can do anytime after the second week of August, after the first week of August.
Yeah, me too.
I've coordinated with Mike and you can get dates from him.
Yeah, and I think you're talking Saturday, right, rather than, uh, during the day. Everybody okay with a Saturday-ish, and then we'll start from there. Cuts our, cuts our discussion down quite a bit, okay?
Oh, no, it's not August.
Alright, uh.
Will you please behave?
Just checking my math skills.
How are they?
Not good.
Oh dear.
It's too late in the day.
She's not career ready.
She's.
I've been counting to twenty-five.
Okay, before this deteriorates any further, we're gonna move right along, uh, community engagement.
So, can I start this one? Cause yesterday, Brian and I went to the CTE, right?
What's that?
Uh, it's the recognition night for the center.
For technology in Essex.
Essex Center.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I gotta say how proud, as a Winuski parent and resident and school board member, I was to see how many of our students. Were recognized and had awards, just how many students are succeeding in that program.
Yeah.
You know, it was awesome to see, and, and I was like, hey Brian, hey Brian, look, you know, and even some of our adult learners, or adult community members. Go through their program and some, a couple, one of them I know graduated and stuff, so it was just really refreshing to see. It wa- it was a great experience, and we have a lot of Winuski kids there, and one of the things Brian says is they should say when they, even when they walk. Across to get their certificate of completion for the year, this town's like, so we're gonna actually put a bug in somebody's ear about that.
Okay.
Because it was just so nice, and our kids are doing great, they have won awards and.
That's wonderful.
Silver medals, scholarships, it was awesome.
And does that information come back to the school so that even their comrades and teachers know and all that? Oh, good, good. There's a celebration about it, good. So they will still graduate here on, oh, good.
So, but in the food service, in the graphic design area, I think there was, uh, cosmetology. I don't know, but there's so many different programs there, it was so awesome. So, I was very proud of our, our district.
Yeah, that's always good to, always good to see and witness, for sure. Any other, uh, community engagement? I know Julian, you had a, uh, beginning of a discussion on an opiate, uh.
Yeah, yeah, so with the Coalition for Safe and Peaceful Communities down at the O'Brien Community Center, we had a conversation on. Uh, opiate, uh, use, its impacts, prevention, uh, and it was a really interesting discussion, very rich discussion. The first of what I hope will be many more, uh, so if you missed it, there are more opportunities to come. Uh, and, uh, yeah, I would love, it was great to, to, to have, uh, Mike and Tori there. Felt like we had a good, strong school representation, uh, and I think, uh, we need to continue to do that. And I've been talking to the folks around here who have been in charge of the Peace Jam group, uh, which is a group of high school students. That went out and collected amazing data from over four hundred Winuski residents about their attitude toward Winuski and the future in Winuski. Which, as far as I know, is the only effort of that sort of detail and depth, uh, to have ever been conducted in Winuski. And it's great data, uh, and I think it's gonna be useful for structuring the future of the conversation, they came up with some really interesting findings. Maybe actually at some point, uh, it would be useful to have them come in and present to us.
Absolutely, I would love to hear what they did.
It's really amazing.
That's fabulous.
They had some really fascinating outcomes, like some differences in, in sort of newer Winuski residents versus more long-term Winuski residents. Their hopes and dreams for the future, and their perception of the sort of general baseline of quality of life here. Really interesting stuff, and it dovetails nicely with what we're hoping to do with the community dialogue on opiates. Next one is gonna be probably in August, uh, and more on that coming soon.
And I'd add to that, um, I was on the, the governor's summit for opiate, um, forum.
Uh-huh.
Opiate Awareness Forum, uh, that planning committee and that forum is happening next Monday, on Pelear. And the idea is that they have targeted, um, by county, groups of folks that can then go back to the counties. And really start spreading the word and mobilizing and so forth.
Hmm.
Correct.
Um, so, that'll be good to stay abreast and kind of keep that connected to what you're doing too.
Totally, yeah, yeah, we'd love to have those people down.
Yeah. And then, secondly, very importantly, I would like to introduce you to Rainbow Chen, who is finishing up her ninth grade year. At Winuski High School, and wrote a fabulous application to become your new student representative to the school board.
Oh.
Yay! Welcome.
We are very grateful, uh, for her joining us and joining Ladania as the, the student team for the upcoming couple of years. And Ladania, I mean, uh, Rainbow wrote about, um, school spirit in her application. And she is very interested in figuring out ways to increase school spirit.
Awesome.
Excellent, we're gonna support her, Shannon Ladania, and, and doing that in the next couple of years.
Great.
Yeah, I, I think one of the exciting pieces is that we've got the, we'll have the same two of you hopefully for two years. To let you expand the thought of what you're doing and be able to pass something a lot more in-depth on to somebody that may follow you after two years. So that they get that wealth of your knowledge passed along, rather than having to learn through it, right, like you're doing, so.
What works, what doesn't?
Yep, so, welcome aboard, Rainbow.
Welcome, Rainbow.
Forward to having you with us.
So exciting.
And on s- and on school spirit and community engagement, the athletic banquet was held on Sunday. And it's amazing how well our kids do, even in the state, we're really starting to put up some, some numbers in track.
Really?
Three thousand meters, I can't run three hundred. But, yeah, the hurdles, I mean, the kids are really, uh, it's just, it, it's very impressive how dedicated they are. And, um, it's exciting, it's exciting to see them succeed and it's exciting to see them participate.
Uh-huh.
Um, and it was good, there were, you know, quite a few parents there, lots of good food, it was just a good experience.
So what are the highlights you got? So the three thousand meters, hurdles, what else was there?
Oh, what else were there for, for awards around the state? There were several, there was a, there was a, a high jump, I think, a long jump.
Oh, okay.
They all placed within the top four.
Wow.
Which, at the state meetings for Green Mountain, it's a pretty big meet, and it's a long ride if you've never been there.
One of the hurdlers, she was five foot nothing.
Is that right?
So there's a lot of energy in that. Going over, yeah, going over a hurdle is a lot of work, so, alright.
Um, real quick, did Sean, were you able to participate in any of the forums on, um, the DCF? That's been going through the state?
Uh, no. Nope, but I did, um, I've had conversations with, um, Mark Carr, who is our, uh, regional director. And, um, we've been unable to get together in person and we will this summer, uh, but we've had, uh, conversations over the phone. And, um, um, I know that they're, they're working really hard to get feedback from the community on how they can do some things better. And work with families, um, to help kids.
Well, and I think overall communities should be a bigger aspect instead of.
Yeah, it's tough work, very difficult work that they do.
So I was wondering if you had gone, cause I was curious as to what they're really searching for.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was a conflict with something else, but, but Mark and I are gonna get together. I've, um, talked to him a couple of times over the course of the year and, uh, just given him some feedback on some specific cases. That, uh, you know, that we, uh, need some help with, and he's been very responsive.
Perfect. Anything else? Community, we've already talked about next agenda, I think we've got a pretty good path over the next couple of months. And a good solid agenda for next year.
Good, I, I think it'd be great to get the Peace Jam information into the community engagement piece, you know, of getting them somewhere on that.
Other focus on learning.
Focus on learning, yeah.
Focus on learning might be the place to.
Okay.
I wrote that down, okay, yeah.
Good, okay.
Alright.
The future of communities, the future of our school.
Yes.
Absolutely. Upcoming dates, uh, last student day, Friday, thirteenth, early dismissal at eleven. End of year luncheon at eleven-thirty to celebrate the empty school, and then graduation on the fourteenth at one.
It won't be empty for very long.
No, no, we're using it.
Yep.
Do we, do people need tickets to get to graduation? Can anybody, okay?
There should be ample space.
Not eleven o'clock?
I have one o'clock here.
One o'clock.
I think that's on there.
Yes, it is.
I'm a few hours early.
Sorry, better than a few hours late. Okay, at this point then, I would, uh, accept a motion to move into executive session.
So moved. Oh, three, all at the same time.
All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's opposed. Alright.